Very good. I'd like to welcome everybody to the City of St. Helena Regular City Council Meeting, Tuesday, February 9th, 2021. I'm going to hand this to Priya to help us understand how folks can join the remote access and also our Spanish language interpretation.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. So tonight's meeting will have live Spanish interpretation. To access the Spanish interpretation, you will need to use Zoom from either a computer, a tablet, or a smartphone. And instructions on how to download the Zoom app are listed in Spanish and English on the city's website where the agenda is posted. So, once you join the meeting using the Zoom app, you will see a little globe. It's either at the top or the bottom of your screen, and you're going to want to click on that globe, and that will allow you to listen to this meeting with live Spanish interpretation. So, I'm going to also talk a little bit about how folks can participate in tonight's meeting. So, there are a few ways. If you are using the Zoom app, you can use the raise hand feature that's at the top or the bottom of your screen when the mayor calls for public comment. If you're just joining using the phone, all you'll need to do is dial 669-900-6833, and then at the prompt, you'll want to put in 830-899-24745, and press pound. And then during the public comment, you can press *9, and that will allow you to raise your hand. So that's how you can participate if you're just calling in. And that is how, that's all I have for participation.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move to the Pledge of Allegiance. If folks would mute your microphones and place your hand on your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll do our roll call, please.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Chito?
Yes.
Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. So we'll move to our public forum. This is where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. Brief questions by council members or clarifications may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas, but in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. Cindy, our city clerk, is going to be seeing if there's any public comment this evening?
We do have a hand raised by Mr. Howard. I'm going to allow you to speak, and when you, I am also going to be timing the four-minute public comment, and you'll hear a bell ring when it's over. Mr. Howard, you should be able to talk.
Is there a mute, Mr. Howard?
How's that?
There we go.
Perfect.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. My name is Bryce Howard. I'm representing Clover Flat Landfill and Upper Valley disposal services. Yesterday at the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority JPA meeting, Mayor Ellsworth voiced some concerns about the JPA oversight and transparency. We at Upper Valley and Clover Flat Landfill are always available to answer any questions and try to address any concerns Mayor Ellsworth, the city council, city staff, the public, or any of our customers might have. We are committed to providing superior service, protecting the environment, and the safety of the public and our employees. With that said, I wanted to address a couple of things that were brought up by Mayor Ellsworth. One is that the JPA meetings are held about six times a year, sometimes more. They're always open to the public. They're noticed to the public. They're currently, there's Zoom available for the public. I hope that after we all get back together and have in-person meetings, that the Zoom option or some other option will be available so more participation can happen, because we have seen an up increase in this participation now that we have Zoom. The other thing is that I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that Clover Flat and Upper Valley disposal services are inspected monthly by Environmental Health Department, that are inspected quarterly or annually by the Barrier Water Control Board and the Barrier Resources Control Board. And I'm proud to say at Clover Flat Landfill, over since the new management team took over in 2019, we have not had any violations or any concerns at the Clover Flat Landfill. Also, I wanted to address how the glass fire impacted us. We did talk about this back in October once before. I wanted to bring it up one more time, that when the glass fire went through Clover Flat Landfill, all the land, the landfill itself, the trash was completely buried with soil, and so the trash itself never caught on fire. And also, the landfill extraction system, the actual wells that penetrate the trash that extract gas, none of them were on fire either. So, the impact was very minimal to the actual landfill itself. In fact, we probably wouldn't back up and operate within a couple of days, but we needed a week to clear off downed power lines and trees for safety of access. But we were back operational a week later. Also, I wanted to talk about another concern Mayor Ellsworth brought up, which was this idea of importation of fire debris into Clover Flat Landfill from surrounding counties. And we all know that when the Tubbs Fire went through in 2017, and the cleanup started over in 17 and 18, it was devastating to a lot of communities. It became a regional effort by many, many landfills to try and handle the millions of tons of fire debris before the rainy season hit. Sonoma County's landfill handled an extra million tons of fire debris alone. Clover Flat handled just over 130,000. Sonoma County's landfill handled about three times its normal capacity. That's about what Clover Flat did as well. So, we acted as a group, along with several other landfills, to try and get this environmental problem solved as quickly as possible. Napa County exports roughly about 100,000 tons of trash a year to Solano County. About 35,000 tons a year goes into the Clover Flat Landfill. So you can see that it's sort of a regional system that works. I'm hoping that in the future, we're able to come back and speak to you about some of the exciting projects we have coming up. Like, for an example, co-collected residential help coming up probably later this spring and early summer. We're going to purchase a wattle maker for our site. We're going to make erosion control wattles. We'll be able to distribute to the public and sell to the public and to our customers, which will make out of wood chips that basically came from down fire trees. We're looking forward to starting a landfill gasification project that will take 10,000 tons of organics and turn it into another one megawatt of renewable power. We already produce about 800 kilowatts of renewable power, but we're hoping to add another megawatt sometime in the near future. Two other projects we have going there are very exciting. One is leachate treatment. We're looking forward to having a leachate treatment system that actually takes the leachate we make, turn it into a renewable agricultural irrigation water, and use it on our site for irrigation. We're going to start that project this summer. And then also this summer, we're going to be implementing the thing we call zero discharge, which is taking any of the operating stormwater, any of our areas that are operational, and capturing that water and containing that onsite, and reusing that water onsite for construction purposes or for irrigation as well. So I'd like to conclude by saying, if any of the council members have any questions at any time, we're always available to answer them. Any of the staff members, and we're certainly willing to give anyone a tour of any of our facilities at any time. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
With that, I'll bring it back to Ms. Chafopoulos, our city clerk, to see if there's any additional public comment. Cindy, are you seeing?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, very good.
Excuse me. Yes, yes, we have a hand raised. Just one moment. Okay, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alyssa Koresh, and I'm a current junior at Napa High School. I'm here tonight with Emily Bid for American Canyon High School, speaking on behalf of Schools for Climate Action, based in the entirety of Napa County. Our youth-led organization is currently putting its efforts into preventing the negative effects of the fossil fuel industry and aiding the transition away from the gas-powered vehicles within Napa County. As we work to prevent new gas station development in American Canyon and establish more electric charging stations in Napa, we wanted to additionally connect with other cities in the county. As everyone must know, we must reach net zero emissions before the year 2030, or the effects of climate change will be irreversible. In order to accomplish this goal, we depend on the help of our local elected officials who make important choices for our cities. We're extremely impressed by Santa Helena's work towards combating climate change, but we shouldn't stop now. Change must come fast, and progress must be swift. We ask you to continue keeping climate change in mind as you make important decisions for the city of Santa Helena, and we thank you for all your hard work. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for the comment. And we appreciate the Schools for Climate Action being engaged in this countywide regional discussion, how we move into the future and make sure that future is there for these next generations. So, thank you. Cindy, do we have any other additional comment?
I am not seeing any.
Okay, very good.
Cindy, sorry, just to interject. Would you make, is there a way you can get the contact information from that last speaker, or ask her to contact me tomorrow after the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Very good. So we will move now to our reports by staff and city council, future agenda. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just one minute. There was a public comment by the former Mayor Allen Galbraith regarding Assembly Bill 571. Seems like that would be a reasonable conversation for the city to have at some point with respect to limitations on campaign contributions alone. So I would, I would ask if that'd be put on an agenda, future agenda, at a time that is considered reasonable by the city manager?
I certainly support that, yes.
Thank you.
Mark, you can look and see where that would slot into our work plan? Great. Okay, very good. So now we'll move on to our reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. I will start with our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of things to report on. Firstly, before this evening's regular session, we had a special meeting where we had a closed session on potential risk of litigation. And the impetus for that litigation was a letter that we received from Water Audit California late last year, expressing concerns that certain city activities were having adverse impacts on public trust resources. Since we received that letter, the city attorney's office has been discussing these issues with Water Audit California to develop, to discuss steps that the city and Water Audit could take to address concerns related to the public trust. And to that end, the city and Water Audit have jointly developed a statement that would confirm steps that the city and Water Audit will take in furtherance of our shared commitment to protect public trust resources. We discussed that statement with council in closed session this evening, and the council indicated their support for the statement and directed that it come back to the council in open session at our next meeting for affirmation. The second item to report on is it's my understanding that there's been a number of complaints in town related to some homes that have been on the market for co-ownership use. And I just wanted to make the council aware that our office is looking at that issue. We've looked at the marketing materials for those homes, and we do have some concerns that it seems to be inconsistent with our existing zoning regulations. And so we're delving further into that issue and are looking into both what we can do under our current regulations and potentially looking at some changes to the existing regulations that we have to address that type of use. So that's something that I'll be reporting to you more in the future. And that's all I have for this evening.
Good, thank you. And I'll move to the city manager. I know we'll have a COVID update a little bit later in the meeting, but I don't know if there are any other items.
That's correct. An update shortly, but no additional comments now. Thank you.
Very good. And our finance director.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth and council members. Just wanted to let the council and the public know that our CAFRA, so our comprehensive annual financial reports, was posted to the city's website, as well as submitted to GFOA for an award last Monday. So you can locate it on the finance section of the city's website underneath financial reports, and you'll see a section for the CAFRA reporting, and just pull up the most recent one, which is the financial report ending June 30th, 2020. And I also do want to do a big thank you to Mandy Kellogg. This was a huge lift to get this up and on the website, working with a new auditing firm, as well as several disasters. It took a lot of work, a lot of evenings and weekends, and I do appreciate everything that she did to get this up and available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Wonderful work by the finance department, and this CAFRA is such a great tool for the city, for the community, for the council, for everybody to really understand our finances. So thank you very much for this work. We'll move now to our city clerk.
Yeah, so I just want to plug for the ATSC Committee. I would love to see some community members apply and apply to be a member on the team. So you can get an application on our website or reach out to me, and I would love to provide one. So if you have any questions, just please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to Public Works.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Very good. Our planning and being.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council. We will officially be having our kickoff for the housing element process tomorrow with staff and the consultant. Some of the items that we'll be talking about include the schedule, community engagement, the RENA, and when we'll be having that first joint planning commission and council meeting to just talk about where we are and the next steps. And I do know it really seems to be a moving target with the RENA, and I know that the council's anxious to understand our work program and where we're going. So I hope to get some really good information, and I'll include a projected date for our next meeting in the Friday update. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, moving forward on our housing goals with this housing element is tremendous. So thank you for that work. We'll move to our police or fire. Do we have somebody here this evening? I'm not seeing. So we will move to our council members, Councilmember Hall? Oh, Mark, I'm seeing you.
Briefly, I know our Parks and Recreation Director has a bit of an advertisement he would like to share tonight, if there's additional time.
Yes, absolutely. Please, Mr. Peachley, if you have something to bring up. I apologize if I missed that.
Okay, so you should have something on your screen, Mr. Mayor. Do you see it?
I do, yes.
Yeah. It's going to be Love Week next week. So this was the, this is the effort of our, one of our recreation supervisors to drive this campaign and put it all together. And Stephanie, Amalia, and I will be helping people get into the mood next week. It will start with being able to pick up your love kit, which is essentially just an activity kit. You can go online and you can register to pick up your activity kit. You can also register to send a free candygram. So you'll want to go to our department webpage, look for our events tab, and there should be in there Love Week. And you can go ahead and you can fill that out. It's pretty easy. It's a Google form, easy to do. And we've already had, as of about 3 o'clock this afternoon, we had 40 people taking advantage of sending a candygram. And then starting on Monday, there'll be a sing-along, Good For Your Soul, and that will be with Mr. Mayor Jeff Ellsworth. On Tuesday, it will be all about loving your parks and showing a little love by visiting Star Baldwin Park on Spring Street. In there, you'll find a big, big heart that you and your loved one, whoever that might be, can put your faces in the heart and do a picture. And we're encouraging people to go out there and enjoy that. There'll also be some signage through the park that just reminds people of how much, how valuable parks are and how lucky we are to live in the community like Santa Helena. On Wednesday, Love Yourself, and this will be the virtual guided meditation with Brooke Baraz. And all of these things will take place at 12:15, with the exception of Tuesday, the Love Your Park. That's self-guided. You can go anytime between 9:00 a.m. and dusk for that. On Thursday, Love Your Body. You can do a Pilates workout in the park with Denise Henquist, and that is going to be socially distanced, weather permitting, socially distanced, wearing a mask, but you can come out and do some free Pilates, do something good for your body, show your body some love. By doing that, there'll be more information about that on the website. And the last one is just to love your city. And we're asking everybody there, just during the day, to post a selfie telling everybody how much you love Santa Helena with the hashtag of #MySantaHelena and @SantaHelinarec. And unless there's any questions, that's all I've got for you.
Well, that's really great. Can I ask a question about if, with the selfies, is there a way that once we get them all compiled, we can present them so that everybody can see?
I think we could do that. We could probably capture those off of Facebook and Instagram. Absolutely.
That's great. Well, this is a wonderful opportunity. This last year has taken a lot of love and heart from our community to work together through all of this. And now we're at a place where we still have work to do, but taking this opportunity to celebrate each other, our community, and celebrate the love we have here. Really appreciate your putting this together.
Absolutely. And, you know, we always say hashtag small-town feel big-time fun, but this time it is small-town feel big-time love. So we hope everybody who wants to participate can.
Great. Any council questions on that before Andre checks off? Okay, thank you, Andre. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And the whole staff, really, the Parks and Rec staff. Thank you.
They're the ones who do most of the work.
Great. Well, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to our council members. We'll check in first with Councilmember Hall.
No updates. Thank you.
And Councilmember Chito.
I'll just update really quickly. I had my first Upper Valley Waste Management Authority meeting, and I did reach out to the chair before that meeting and Councilmember Koberstein, so I could get up to speed, and as well with the county staff that helps us with that. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to me about it. Also, I wanted to note that the chair and all of the members were very complimentary to the hard work of past Councilmember Koberstein and all of the work she did on our behalf.
Thank you. And then we'll move to Councilmember Hardy.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Doring.
Well, I had the great pleasure to be a judge in the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. We got to interview four panelists, four finalists, both from Calistoga and from Santa Helena. And I could just tell you, it was extremely heartwarming. What a great opportunity to listen to these young people tell their stories. All of them had a story to tell. And I can affirm to the city and to the city council that the Boys and Girls Club is really doing an excellent job in helping to make sure that these young people are successful in their lives. I was very proud to be a part of that and learn so much, and even had a few tears during that judging. So, thank you for that opportunity. And I think I came away with knowing that we have to continue to support our Boys and Girls Club for the reasons I stated. Thank you.
I'll second that. Certainly, the work the Boys and Girls Club is doing is phenomenal.
I would just say, just as a side note, maybe in about 50 years, it won't be called the Boys and Girls Club anymore. It will progress beyond that, but that's another issue for another time.
Thank you, Mr. Doring. So I just want to check in very briefly with the community, let folks know that we're continuing to communicate very regularly with the county, with the other cities, as we work towards getting this vaccine rollout for the community. Mark will have an update on the COVID issues coming up. You know, we're not all the way through this yet. We know we're working towards recovery, but we want to just encourage folks to stick with the protocols, stay with the program here. We'll get through it. It's going to take a little bit longer, but we see light, and we'll keep working together. If, want to continue putting out that if anybody is struggling, whether it's a personal issue, a business issue, health, mental health issue, financial issue, please reach out to one of our many nonprofits, to the city, to the county. Just if you or somebody you know is in a situation, we want to get through this together. So please reach out. And so with that, I will bring it back, and we'll move then into our presentations and public recommendations, which I'm going to start with a proclamation. This was a proclamation that was brought forward by Vice Mayor Doring regarding Black History Month, and I was really pleased for him to bring this forward, and I have the honor to read this evening. And so this is the City of St. Helena Proclamation declaring February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of St. Helena. Whereas Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of Black history, developed Black History Month. Dr. Woodson, whose parents were enslaved, was an author, historian, and the second African-American to earn a PhD at Harvard University. Whereas Dr. Woodson stated, "Those who have no record of what their forebears have accomplished lose the inspiration which comes from the teaching of biography and history." In 1926, he proposed the National Negro History Week, which was intended to showcase everything students learned about Black history throughout the school year. Whereas Dr. Woodson chose the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass, a famed abolitionist who escaped from slavery, and President Abraham Lincoln, who formally abolished slavery. In 1976, President Gerald Ford expanded the week into Black History Month, a federally recognized celebration of the contributions African-Americans have made to this country. Whereas, as we celebrate Black History Month this year, we proudly herald many firsts, including the first Black Vice President of the United States, Kamala Harris, and the first Black Secretary of Defense, Lloyd Austin. Whereas, throughout the month of February, the Smithsonian's National Museum of African-American History and Culture is launching free virtual events and conversations about slavery, the Civil War, Reconstruction, Jim Crow segregation, and the fight for civil rights, and affirming and preserving the accomplishments of African-Americans throughout history. You are encouraged to participate in these virtual programs with friends and family. Whereas the history of democracy in the United States is one of struggle and triumph, during Black History Month, we are invited to explore and face the truth of our past, reflect on the continued struggle for racial justice in our country, and draw inspiration and courage from the heroes who came before us. Before our country can move past racial harm and ever expect to move towards reconciliation, we must understand our past and create accountability for it. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jeff Ellsworth, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, along with my fellow council members, do hereby proclaim February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of St. Helena. I call upon all St. Helinans to honor the history made by Black Americans, to reflect on the centuries of struggle that have brought us to this time of reckoning, redemption, and hope, and to continue to fight for racial and social justice in our country and in our community. Thank you. And once again, I want to thank Vice Mayor Doring for bringing forward the proclamation. Moving forward from there, we'll move into our staff briefings, and we'll have an update on our wastewater treatment plant from Erica Smithy, who's our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth and council. We are about to bring to council on February 23rd, the wastewater treatment plant's sequestration mitigated neglect for adoption, as well as approval of the plant specifications for the project in order to advertise it. So stay tuned. That is coming in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council here? We'll move then to our COVID update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to share my screen tonight. And what we're going to first look at is the state of California's tier system. tier system. Um, good news to, we'll, we'll first talk about, uh, the metrics and how we're looking. And then secondly, we'll talk a little bit about vaccines. So, uh, good news in terms of infections, those are in steep decline statewide, uh, really across the country, uh, hoping that, uh, over the past weekend, we don't see a bump, uh, in a couple of weeks due to potential gatherings that occurred over this past weekend, but, uh, very good news that the numbers are dropping. Um, the city and the region remain in what the state calls the, the purple tier, this widespread tier. What we need to do is target, uh, an adjusted case rate of less than, uh, seven here, and also a positivity rate of less than eight. And currently statewide, the numbers are 8.5% on the positivity front statewide, and at the state level, 33% on the adjusted case rate. Uh, this, the county of Napa has, uh, better numbers. The Napa County numbers for positivity are 5.4%. So that would place us today in the substantial tier on that particular measure. But we need to be in both. Uh, we have to have numbers in the red zone here under substantial, uh, to move from purple to red. Uh, so our adjusted case rate today is 22.8% in Napa County. That should drop, uh, in the coming weeks. And, and as it drops below seven, and this remains under eight, uh, the, the county can move into the red substantial. What that would do would be to, in, it would allow for in, indoor dining at 25% of capacity. So the, the hope is that our region and many other regions in the state, uh, will move from this purple tier to the red tier in the coming weeks. Uh, this, the statewide ICU capacity continues to increase. That ICU capacity has increased to 13.6% statewide, and the, the Bay Area region is stronger than that. This is a look at what the state looks like today. Uh, these are, this is a color-coded map that shows you which counties have moved into the red substantial tier or the moderate, uh, yellow tier here. So what we can do is we can, uh, this is on the state website, covid19.ca.gov. And if I just highlight this particular, this, um, Napa County region, what it will do is it will provide us data on what the numbers are, uh, in our region. So, um, this website's thinking. It will show us metrics for Napa County in a moment. And if it doesn't, we'll continue. So I think I'm going to wait, and, uh, we'll, we'll adjust to, this is the Napa County. Here we go. These are the county metrics that I just stated, and this map is available to everyone to follow. They typically update this every Tuesday. So these were, these are numbers that were updated today. I'm going to now turn to vaccinations, and locally, we will be, uh, we will be seeing vaccinations, uh, at the Napa Valley College upper campus beginning tomorrow, and, and we anticipate that will continue through the week. Uh, primarily, that will be people that have already received the first dose that will be scheduled for their second dose. Uh, this is a, a look at the county's website, and what I did was click on the COVID information. And this takes you to a vaccine interest form that the county, uh, has been asking residents to fill out. Uh, terrific news and terrific feedback. More than 40,000 people have, uh, provided information and essentially, uh, communicated whether they, uh, meet various, uh, eligibility requirements, uh, through the county. This process is going to transition in the coming weeks to the state. And the website that the county is directing people to is the State of California's MyTurn website. There's a link directly on this county website that will take you to myturn.ca.gov. And from this location, you go for, through a very similar process than, and, uh, to the process that was involved in filling out the county's vaccination form. It just takes a couple of minutes. I've put my name on both the, the local vaccination, uh, list through the county as well as the states. And the county and the city are encouraging, uh, members of our community that have not received a vaccination to also place, uh, their contact information under the MyTurn website. And, uh, what I also wanted to share on the county's website is they have a lot of terrific resources, depending on the type of, whi- which healthcare provider you have. So there's direct links here to Kaiser Permanente, St. Joseph Health, Sutter Health, uh, the county vaccination form, and all of this information's on the county website. Let me pause there, and I'll, uh, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mark is, Eric, go ahead.
Uh, I was wondering if there's any way we can provide, or is there, uh, I don't know what it is. I don't know how the communication network works down at, uh, Vineyard Valley, but it would be good to have a, a printed version of this that helps folks understand what they need to do to get on the MyTurn website if they haven't heard it already from the rest of the community. But if there's a way we can just plug in there just to make sure that, um, they're getting something, actually, it would be great.
Okay. Sure. And I, and I think in the, in the coming day, uh, or two, we expect to have additional messaging from the county as well.
Okay. Do you, do you know if they've ever created a, uh, like a neighborhood watch group there? I know they used to have one years ago. I think it's disappeared. Is, are they working on bringing it back, or does anybody know?
I, I don't know.
Well, I can, I can tell you in, from conversations with folks at Vineyard Valley and with the ownership, that certainly in looking at, uh, issues like fire preparedness and, uh, issues like that, is it, is working towards that community network, uh, something that they do, uh, want, want to be building there.
Yeah. I think the more we can all encourage them, I think the better. And this, this kind of stuff obviously would just flow through that sort of network. It would be great.
Mark, I've got a question. Uh, is the county encouraging folks to, to sign up on both, uh, the county and MyTurn, or just MyTurn at this point?
They are. They're encouraging both. I, I think it's fair to say the transition will be to the state website. So certainly, we want to encourage people to sign up on the state website as well if they've already signed up on the county. I'm not, uh, I'm not sure how the data, if at all, would transfer to the state. So as a precaution, it will be helpful to include, uh, information for this, on the state website as well.
Okay.
And, and the, and the forms are slightly different. Uh, you essentially identify which classification of employment or your current status, uh, your age. There's just some very similar questions, but they are slightly different. But it's very easy to use both the, the county form as well as the state form.
Okay. And we know that St. Helena Hospital's been very active in, uh, doing both a first dose and now this week, a second dose for a, a large, uh, part of our community, including, I believe, the Vineyard Valley, Silverado Orchards, Woodbridge area, um, uh, seniors. Uh, and so, um, then as more supplies come in, they'll get back to doing the first dose. And Napa County's been remarkable in being ready for whatever the, the state can provide. And nationally, statewide, it's been, uh, there's been a slowdown in the vaccinations, but we know that they're, they're now coming, and we're prepared as we, as, as prepared as we can be.
Right. And our understanding is Napa County, uh, ranks fourth statewide out of 58 counties in terms of, uh, the percentage of its population vaccinated. And I think the three other counties ahead of us may be very small counties. So, uh, really terrific news on, on the vaccination front locally.
Right. Any other questions, uh, regarding COVID vaccinations, numbers, et cetera? Any questions from the council? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Presswitch.
You're welcome.
And we'll now move to consent items. And Cindy, I have to apologize. You had mentioned that there's one item that I need to read, uh, but I, I have not, don't know if I have that one noted.
It's on your script.
Okay.
Go, go to the very bottom of your script.
Okay.
And it's in red. It's right after item 8.8.
Okay. Got it. It was just a little deeper in there than I thought. Okay. So we'll move, uh, to the consent, uh, calendar. And, uh, if anybody would like to pull an item, or if, uh, if, uh, Cindy, if you see a hand on the public, uh, uh, check, uh, check in there, please let me know. So I'll start with 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, 8.6, 8.7, 8.8. Let's see. So 8.8, is this what I'm reading? Cindy, I'm sorry, I'm just a little...
Go to the bottom of 8.8, and I put in red, the section that you need to read out loud.
So I'm going to read that now, and then, um, then we can, uh, take a vote on the consent calendar. Or do I do this one separately?
You can go ahead and read the statement now, and then call for a motion to approve consent.
Okay. Very good. In accordance with the requirement, uh, this is for item 8.8. In accordance with the requirement of California Code Section 54953(c)(3), prior to taking final action, the legislative body shall orally report a summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive. The final action for consent item 8.8 is approving amendment number two to the employment contract for the finance director with the new title of Administrative Services Director effective Ju- July 1st, 2021, or upon retirement of the HR IT Director, whichever comes first. And the recommended final action on salary related to the compensation for the Administrative Services Director is a salary range of $129,591 to $157,519, includes a temporary 5% decrease effective July 1st, 2020, which in accordance with amendment number seven to unrepresented compensation program between City of St. Helena and mid-managers and department heads, will be restored no later than July 1st, 2021, with a range of $136,071 to $165,809, with no other changes in benefits. So that is item 8.8. And, uh, with that, I will ask if there is a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Still moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hardy, was that you that made the first motion?
Yes, it was.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Uh, Chateau?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Thank you. So we'll move now, we'll move past public hearings, seeing none, we'll move to, uh, 10.1, under Old Business. This is discussion and review of the Hunt Avenue Hub pop-up park and temporary street closure of Hunt Avenue from Main Street to Railroad Avenue. And this is prepared by Stephanie Yakabachi, our Recreation Supervisor.
Hello there. Uh, thank you, Mayor Ellsworth, Vice Mayor Doring, and councilmembers. So we have a quick little presentation to share with you, uh, regarding Hunt Avenue Hub. So I'm going to share my screen. Um, so the Hunt Avenue Hub, uh, has been open for 14 weeks. And I think what would be important this evening is to review the timeline of the pandemic and how it's affected Napa County, uh, for some of our newer council members and for the public, just to review, how did we get to the concept of Hunt Avenue Hub and where we are, um, now? So I'm going to go way back. We, we're almost one year into the pandemic. So if we look at 2020 and we look at the breakdown of all 52 weeks, um, it is very odd how it works out, but about 11 of those weeks, uh, were the only time that our restaurants were allowed normal dining, which is going to be no capacity indoor. Um, they could do outdoor and takeout. So only 11 and a few days of the entire 52 weeks where our restaurants allowed to be normal operations. And then about 11 was outdoor only, and about 11 is takeout. It went something like this, like regular open, takeout open, open indoors, just kidding, outdoors, maybe you can be modified, but there's also a fire in there. Just kidding, you have to be outside again, and now you can only be takeout. So limited indoors, uh, this is going to be when their capacity was limited at either 50%, 50% capacity or 25% capacity, um, 19 weeks in total in 2020. And I think it's important to take note that two of those weeks were the glass fire, which the air quality, uh, was very poor, and so a lot of our businesses were closed. In addition to restaurants, you know, like us in the county, were notified the day before an announcement would happen. So businesses would be told, hey, guess what? Tomorrow you can resume outdoor dining. It takes time for our restaurants to gather the supplies that they need, prepare, have adequate PPE, get their staff together. So I would, I would take this limited indoor 36% of, very loosely, because I know that it, it takes a lot longer than a few hours for a business to modify their operations in order to adhere to the current, um, health standards. So looking at the, uh, rest of, uh, this year, on March 18th, uh, the Executive Stay Home Order was issued for, uh, the pandemic. Uh, this followed with an executive order in Napa County as well. About a month later, the governor announced in April the roadmap to recovery. Uh, I know it feels kind of weird to even remember that, but that was, you know, four stages, uh, and it was the four-stage plan to safely reopen the economy is what we went through at that time. Early in May, the governor announced that certain counties who had met, uh, different indicators would be allowed to apply for a variance. They were looking at like 11 indicators, uh, back in May of 2020. Right now, we're really looking at three figures, uh, when we look at our data. Napa County applied for that variance on May 18th. They were approved, and restaurants were allowed to dine in. Shortly after, our wineries and hotels were allowed to reopen on June 5th. I think it's just important to know that traveling, uh, was really not promoted, so this really took a hit on our tourism, uh, which is a big part of St. Helena and the rest of the county. On July 9th, Napa County was put on a monitoring list, so they said, hey, hold the phone, your data is not looking too great. Restaurants needed to go back to indoor dining. I do want to make a special note that in the very beginning of the pandemic, our retail sector was hit very hard. They had to close their shops, and they were only allowed for curbside pickup, uh, which, as you can imagine, is, is really hard for a shop, for people to, uh, shop online, and that's something that a lot of our small businesses didn't offer, uh, in 2020. So, uh, after we were on the monitoring list, we were there for almost two months. On August 31st, we went from a, uh, resilient roadmap into the blueprint for a safer economy. Uh, then we were put into the red tier, so that would be tier two, which, uh, did allow for 25% indoor occupancy. So we went from outdoor only to slightly indoors. It was at this time that council was really passionate on what we could do for our businesses. The concept of a pop-up park came to be. They asked city staff to, uh, create a concept, present it to council. We brought it to council, and then brought it back to council with a little bit further, uh, thought put into it on September 22nd, and the hub was approved, uh, that weekend. Unfortunately, the glass fire erupted. So all our operations were paused. City staff diverted to, uh, the third level emergency of the year. And then on October 7th is when finally any remaining evacuation orders were lifted for St. Helena. A lot of businesses were able to go back to their operations at that time, and then we were lucky that on October 21st, our data looked, uh, decent, uh, in pandemic standards, and we moved into that orange tier, which allowed us from a 25% indoor occupancy to a 50% indoor occupancy. We were also able to divert our attention back to the Hunt Avenue Hub, and we opened it on October 30th. So at the time that we did open it, we were in the orange tier, uh, but the concept was really created, and the plans were created while we were, um, in the purple tier, outdoor only, and working through this. So we, you'll, you'll see that we'll talk about, um, some parking. We offered some live music on November 6th and the 7th. This was really well attended. The weather was wonderful. It was socially distanced. People were wearing masks. Um, we were still trying to solve some of the, uh, parking problems that we were enduring with Hunt Avenue Hub. We had a nearby property owner who does not have their spaces rented that said, hey, I've got eight parking spaces. You could temporarily relabel those for public parking. We did those. It's off money way. May Wu is the property owner. We did those. It's off moneyway. May Wu is the property owner. But we noticed even with signage, those spaces were used every day by main street staff. So it is, it is a problem, I think, that we've got to work through with our businesses as a city, as a community, because we do still have a lot of people who are working downtown parking in the, you know, most desired parking spaces for what is hopefully tourists and shoppers and diners. So on November eighth, November eighteenth, excuse me, the state pulled the emergency brake. We reverted back to the purple tier. So it really was not that long. It was October twenty first through November eighteenth, less than a month, in which our businesses went from modified indoor dining to totally outside again. We put our holiday decor up on November nineteenth, which added a lot of joy to Main Street. We opened our downtown bathrooms. Great job, Erica and Public Works. On December third, we offered live music once again, although this was not as well attended and it was pretty cold due to, you know, inclement weather. We did not offer any additional live music during the hub's tenure. December seventeenth is when the state home order was issued. So we were in takeout only. That order lasted for a total of forty days for Napa County. It wasn't until January twenty fifth that the order was lifted. We were able to go back to that purple tier. So outdoor dining did resume. And then here we are. So as of yesterday, I'm so sorry, my date is out. That should be February eighth. As Mark said, you know, the county positivity rate, five point four, adjusted case rate, twenty two point eight, and the health equity is eight. Last week, this twenty two point eight, the adjusted case rate was at twenty eight. So we are seeing that drop pretty drastically. We're hoping that it continues on that trend. And then we also are looking good with this health equity rate. So you know, in just a few weeks, we're really hoping to go from the purple tier into into that red tier. So moving into what it takes for the logistics. Oh. Sorry about that, guys. What's at the hub now? So when we, when we went to the shelter at home order, we did reduce some of the furniture. So when we first opened the hub, we had four top tables. We had wine barrels with stools, umbrellas. So we were just, just reduced some of the tables to allow for additional social distancing. So currently, we've got six tables with umbrellas, chairs with backs, plus one A D A table. So you can bring a chair and be able to use that table as well. We still have the overhead cafe lighting that is strong across Hunt Avenue. There's trash cans. We increased our signage to say, you know, only gather with your household. On site hand washing station with hand sanitizer product to disinfect your table. We do have the safety barricades, and I really want to thank Harold and Smith for bringing those over and the equipment to do that. We've got our olive trees. And we do have three parking spaces lined at the back of the hub to address some of the concerns about, about the parking. When we first brought this item to council, we did not have our traffic control plan finished yet. I'm wildly impressed with the efforts of all parties involved, volunteers, staff, council members, businesses who took part in putting this together and moving very quickly to make it happen. We thought we were going to be able to fit four parking spaces on the east end of the closure. We were only able to fit three. In addition, we thought that there was going to be four parking spaces from the chamber, but the chamber graciously is allowing Cook Tavern, well, Cook Restaurant, excuse me, to use some of their spaces. So we got two chamber spaces, and then we were hoping to make up for the other two by using two of Joel Gott's spaces. But then we did lose that corner parking, which is tenant parking for Better Home and Gardens. And before offices were remote and then they could reopen. So we needed to replace their parking. So our, our net loss of parking is actually seven. So I did want to clarify that. The cleaning of the hub. So here's our weekly schedule. City staff are cleaning that space, double rounds, Monday through Friday, disinfecting and trash removal. We are just seeing most of our trash on the weekends. So we do have a third party cleaning service that does nightly rounds, Thursdays through Sundays. And then we have a working relationship with city staff and merchants to notify of any issues. At the beginning of the Hunt Avenue Hub, we had a Rogan Wine Company. You can see in that bottom photo. They are just off of Hunt. And so their staff are watching the space and helping us keep the space nice and clean and picking up trash. You know, we've got a nearby tenant, Larry Height. They've got my cell phone. They're so great about calling me. Come down or dispatching staff to come out and clean. So for the most part, it's been pretty great. We have had weather that does make the cleaning a little hard. We had hay sticking to the ground. If trash falls and it rains, that makes it a little harder to pick up the trash. So we have been hit with that. These were just some quotes. If you take a look deeper into the public comment that's included in this, in the staff report. And that was also from the November live music, which was really popular. So on the staff report, you're going to see some public comment that was submitted through our online webpage. So it was a council recommendation to have an anonymous feedback tool on our city website. So we did create that form where you could submit a comment anonymously. And then we created a Q R code and attached that to signs that were on every table. So you could take a picture and then leave a comment right then in there. So of the thirty eight online comments, eighty two percent of those were complimentary feedback. So that's just saying, I love the hub. It's so great. Keep it open and that sorts of things. Five percent was neutral. Those would include things like bring a food truck, don't bring a food truck. Nothing that was really pro or against. And then thirteen percent would be unfavorable. So again, that's maybe like, I don't like the trucks on my street. Close the hub. This idea is silly. I don't like the lack of parking. So that sort of thing. And that's just the breakdown of those comments online. I did want to share this really beautiful photo of some social shares. So we've really noticed our online reach grow during the pandemic because people are sheltering at home and people have taken to the internet for information. I know that it can be hard to find a reliable source, but this is just really positive. We have that amazing gratitude wall, the council member Chateau and Mary Cobertstein and Jody's Designs and team built construction and the Odd Fellows put up, which is a beautiful art display. And then our Saint Helena snowflake. So these images were shared online using the hashtag Saint Helena checking in in Saint Helena. So it's, it's really good for tourism. I think that it boosted our sense of community and our pride. And, you know, our city of Saint Helena average Facebook reach is up thirteen, over thirteen hundred percent since last March. So we know people are going to the internet and we're really proud to share something positive about Saint Helena and something that shares joy in our community. Again, here's kind of a fun picture of the wall and the hard work that went into, into putting that up. So now just kind of it's up to city council to discuss the future of the hub and the direction of the hub, if that's something you guys would like to see us winding down or if there's a different time than you want to close the hub. It's, it's up to you.
Thank you, Stephanie, for that presentation and walking us through that timeline. And certainly the recognition of, of all that staff did and has done to, to bring this forward and create this positive aspect during this challenging time. So it's really appreciated. And so now the conversation, the discussion is where do we as a council want to go with the hub? What are the thoughts? So I can open it up if anybody wants to start with some thoughts. And then we can kind of get a conversation going about next steps, possibilities, what we, we want to see happen with the hub. Are there any initial comments or thoughts from the council? And we will open it also for public comment after some council discussion. Okay, are we seeing any council hands coming up? I am seeing none. Okay, so I think what we want to talk about, we'll hear from the public, are what are options, possible options moving forward? I know one thing had come up was if we decided to move forward, changing the hub, is there a possibility of doing sort of a half a hub, using just one, one section of that street and not having the whole street blocked off? Had that gotten any traction? I just wanted to check with staff and see if there was any look at that.
Mayor, I can jump in on that. I also want to thank Stephanie for her leadership and all the work that she put into the hub. And I want to acknowledge the work of our Public Works crew and merchants that also helped out with the hub. So it was really a team effort and a lot of effort over the, the last several months. In terms of other options, we haven't put together any specific plans. We've tossed around ideas related to possible parklets on Hunt, perhaps both sides of the street. There's also a red zone opposite Hunt on Main Street, on the west side of Main Street. These are options that we could bring you back ideas about at a later date, but there's no specific plan at this point.
Okay. So with that, I'm still not seeing any council hands. So I'm going to go to Cindy and have her. I see a few hands in public comment. So while I will open that.
Amy, you're able to talk.
Great, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
This is Amy Caraba Salazar. I'm the CEO and President of the Saint Helena Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to speak on behalf of this, of the Hunt Avenue Hub. First and foremost, I want to thank the city and council and Stephanie for doing such a great job and really doing something innovative, I think, for downtown. And I use the word innovative because it was different. It was fresh. It brought a lot of energy and I am speaking on behalf of a majority of our businesses. I wanted to just express some of the feedback that I got at the chamber. We did go around to our businesses. And we were also a little bit of a liaison, working with Stephanie in this project with the feedback. And I would say we had about ninety five, if not ninety eight percent positive feedback from our chamber members and our downtown businesses. There was a, a few businesses that had some challenges in terms of, you know, figuring out the parking, but Stephanie did a phenomenal job working through those challenges and making it nice and smooth. What, a lot of the feedback I received from businesses was they love that there was a safe place for people to go with the sanitization stations there, that the benches, the, the seating for people to go and eat lunch. People were grabbing a drink and, you know, sitting outside safely. And it brought, as I mentioned, a lot of energy during, you know, this pandemic to Main Street. I think it brought a lot of life to Main Street. The, the plants really brought a nice color to downtown and overall, the feel from the businesses was positive as well as from the community. I think people really liked having the downtown Saint Helena historical area really sort of expand a little bit. It felt larger and I think that that is just what made it so great. During the holidays, we were able to have the snowflake there. We were able to install an interactive light show, have music, have all these different elements. And I think in the future, you know, I've spoken with Stephanie about this and Mark, it would be so great during the summer to have music there, maybe an art walk. I mean, there's just a lot of things we can do to bring a lot of life to downtown and energy. So I would just hope that you would take my thoughts in consideration. And one other thing I would like to say that I think is important. One form of feedback that I did receive that if we were to, you know, keep it up or close it and do it again, whatever you decide, is when, when guests and visitors are coming into town, because I wear that destination marketing hat as the CEO of the chamber, there was a lot of the orange cones and the construction signage. So if we could possibly figure out a better way to beautify that, if we were to close it or keep it closed, I think that that's really important to think about because we don't want our guests to think that there's construction if there isn't, right? But we have to have those safety signs out because of the closure. So I, I'm bringing that up because I feel that that's really important, that we figure something out there. Just because when guests are coming in, we want them to really see Saint Helena in its best light. And I think the Hunt Avenue Hub does that. I think it adds so much character to downtown. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy. And I just want to take a moment to thank you and the chamber for the incredible work over the last year through this, through this crisis of just hanging in there and working with our businesses and, and being a part of, of this challenging time. I just want to say thank you. So with that, then we'll see if there's any additional public comment.
There is. I, I don't have a name of the person, but I'm going to allow you to talk. If you could please state your name for the record. And you can unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted, Cindy?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Yes, I'm Ann Carr at seventeen thirty Dean York Lane, and I'm, I'm Glenn Smith's computer, my husband. And first of all, I wanted to say give Stephanie big kudos for what you all have done on Hunt Avenue. I think it's wonderful. And, and also to Amy as well. And for me, I see it as a, a great project, but also a great beginning of, of a concept in Saint Helena to move our, our socializing and our, even our commerce off of Main Street. And I, I would like to put in a plug here for Moneyway because I think Hunt Avenue, the Hunt Avenue Hub is, is a great prelude to move, to move our, our town actually off of the highway. I see that the biggest issue, my daughter, who was born and raised here and went through Saint Helena High School, came to town over Christmas break and said, what has happened to Main Street? There's, businesses are closed. It, it was very depressing to her. And, and I see Main Street as our biggest problem. We have trucks, we have cars, we have, we have noise, we have pollution on Main Street. And I think that that has been one of the biggest contributions of the Main Street hub is to get our life in Saint Helena, both for tourists and for our locals off of Main Street. And I, I would hope that you all, as a council, would see this as a prelude to trying to figure out what we can do with Moneyway and possibly eventually Railroad Avenue. Hopefully we have some resources, but to, to make those just exciting areas. I think Moneyway could be a wonderful place for, as a walking street, as kind of a European feeling area. I picture it with entrances to restaurants and shops and lights. And I know there's a lot of work to be done, but I think that we have in the hub a real beginning of a different focus in Saint Helena, which gets us off of Main Street. And, and thank you for all the work that you have put into that. We really appreciate it. We have been there and enjoyed it. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. Are we seeing any additional public comments?
I'm looking, and I am not seeing any hands raised.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council. We'll, we'll close the public comment section. I'll bring it back to the council. Does anybody have some comments sort of to start off this section of the conversation? Ms. Chateau?
I'll start it off. It's such a hard conversation to have because the commute, so much of the feedback has been positive, especially hearing from the business community. I think Stephanie first, thank you so much for everything that you did with everybody that helped you. Because I think going through a really, really hard time for everybody in our community, it provided something that you could do safely and support businesses and pick up a sandwich at our deli, you're at Model Bakery and enjoy it outside. I see the challenges are those cones, as I understand it. You know, I too, the, the hub itself looked spectacular. What made it work was how thoughtful it was and beautiful with the trees and the lights. And the space just looked, it, it added to our downtown, I thought. It was so nice. The challenges are those cones. And as I understand it, The challenges are those cones. And as I understand it, we have to have them for safety. And then also, of course, all of the trucks that were now directed down to the, through the neighborhoods, I felt bad about that with the delivery trucks. So I also think that it took a lot of staff time. And so that's time and resources that aren't being used other places, like perhaps through our parks or there's always, we have to, when we get something, resources are diverted from somewhere else. So I would like to start the conversation off by, if we do need to go down the path of, you know, closing it for now, I would definitely want to know about what the options are, like the parklets, to continue having the conversation about what can we do to bring those elements back that worked so well for our community? If there's something that we can do that isn't the cones down Main Street, that still allows people to sit outside and have that sense of community and isn't the whole street being closed off there.
Thank you. Any additional comments at this point? Am I seeing anybody from the council with some input?
I, I just would echo Anna's comments. First, I'd like to thank staff, Stephanie, Public Works, everybody who already has a full-time job. This was thrown together literally as a, as a rescue attempt while we were all living in hotels scattered all over, right, the North Bay. So kudos to everybody. And to Anna's point, I think every hour spent here is an hour that probably should have been spent someplace else or was dedicated, it was already allocated to be spent someplace else. So I just think there's a lot of energy around, how do we get our downtown back up on its feet? And I think the hub is a is a good experiment. It showed us what we, what we can do in no time flat, thanks to a lot of elbow grease and a lot of people hustling. I think there are some issues that, it, it does feel a little like a construction zone as you come into town. I think it actually starts outside of town with the construction signage that says the roads have been diverted. It feels like you're coming into a construction zone. So and I know the parking is an issue, particularly for the retailers in that block. Parking, for those of you in real estate, it's the lifeblood of retailing. You can actually calculate the value of a shopping center by how many stalls there are in front of it. So getting the parking dialed down, I think is absolutely critical. So I, I like the idea of let's figure out how to keep this conversation going. Either it's railroad or it's parklets here on Hunt or it's money. I know that was a conversation we all started before COVID really hit and before the fires, but the sooner we can get back to those things, I think the better. It's great to see what's happening with COVID case count dropping precipitously. The faster that goes, I think the better. I'm hoping this transition to vaccines, to state coordination over the week, over the next week or two helps accelerate vaccine distribution. I think Napa County has done absolutely the best job in here locally that, that we've seen anywhere statewide, frankly. I'm concerned about control shifting back to the state, but regardless, I just want the environment healthy again, so we can all get back out and shop and carry bags and eat cheeseburgers and laugh and play down Main Street. I mean, that's the whole goal here. So let's look at other ideas if we can, as quickly as we can. Stephanie, you probably have a lot in your head because you've had a lot of conversations. So any ideas that you have be wonderful to, to hear and see. I just think, you know, there's things here that, that worked well. There's things that we can improve. We need to look at what's the effort that would go into improving them in order to make a decision of whether or not we, we stay open or not. Sorry, long, long way around the barn there.
Mr. Doring, Mr. Hardy, any comments at this point?
Yeah, that was a great idea. I wonder who came up with it? No.
Thank you, Paul.
Look. It, it's wonderful, but I think the breadth of the negative effects are, are falling upon some of the residents on Edward. I, I just don't think that's appropriate. So you're going to have to try to balance that out. I, I do for getting it up and running and it was beautiful. It's kind of less beautiful now. We, we tried to actually minimize its attractiveness in a way. You're constantly grappling with messaging with COVID, right? You want to have a place that's beautiful, but you also don't want to attract huge gatherings. So it's that constant balance that we have been facing. And that's the reason it is not as, you know, dense now with table, a lot of other things. I think that may be the main reason. The parking issue and the, the sort of intrusion into the neighborhood on Edwards are of immense concern to me. And so I, I would think we might want to stop shifting now. I think it's an idea that needs to be worked on, but until we figure out how and where the big trucks are, are going to get the safe way, and, and that's a little bit beyond our control to a certain degree, unless we can regulate that, and that's a whole new issue. I'm thinking that it's just too much of a burden on, on those folks. But we have opportunities, as, as one of the speakers said, we do have a, a really great opportunity in, in my mind on money to really spend a lot of time focusing on that. First of all, it's sort of incubated and away from the noise. It is noisy on, in the hub. I mean, I, I experienced that. It's really loud. It's a beautiful spot. It's wonderful. I love the buildings. There's so many things about it that I like. But I think we now need to shift our focus on the money way. And I, as I understand it, we have some money that was appropriate, allocated by Waste Management, hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand. I don't know what that exact number is. And we should use that money to try to beautify and really focus on money way. I think that's our better option at this point until we figure out the parking issue and the big truck issue on, you know, Edwards. So those are my comments at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. Well, for me, it, it seems that we need to separate the decisions about the near term from the much-needed long-term planning. And it's a, it's a complex challenge that Main Street presents. The visual identity, you know, the iconic images and representations of St. Helena are largely tied into the historic structures of Main Street. And yet the fact that our historic downtown is a two-lane highway with really pretty astounding traffic volumes in a normal year, not affected by pandemic and fires. If, if there is any such thing as a normal year in the future, it, it's, it's a conflict and a kind of contradiction because that, as, as Ann Carr's, you know, very thoughtful comments pointed out, the Main Street environment is now in some ways an obstacle to to community participation in the life of the street and, and, and to success for the businesses themselves. So the whole challenge of developing a long-term vision for the future of St. Helena's downtown and and, you know, and, and figuring out how we do that while preserving all of the things that we love about our historic downtown. That's, that's a real planning challenge and I, I think one that's going to take a lot of work over time. So I, I agree with all the comments about the importance of working out new locations on which to direct the energy and activity and especially pedestrian energy and activity. But I think a lot of that requires a very extensive thought and planning and discussion. In the near term, you know, we're, we're dealing with the balancing act that we've been struggling with all through the pandemic. How do we balance our concerns about minimizing the health risk of the pandemic while minimizing the damage of our health precautions to our businesses? And, and, and the oscillations of state policy and guidelines have led to precisely the kind of swinging back and forth that Ms. Yakubachi included in, in her excellent staff report. It, it's, it's been a challenge for everyone. So and, and our, our look at this Hunt Avenue Hub, I think, reflects all of those challenges. So my best sense of things is that we would do well at this point to find some framework for defining how long we'll keep the hub open in, in the near term. Are we going to define that in relation to, say, you know, the moment at which restaurants can begin seating again inside? Or are we going to define it in terms of a fixed date? My own inclination is to think so that there's some certainty to it for those who find the impacts of the hub problematic, that maybe it's the earlier of, you know, a change into code orange or a date. That would be one way to frame it so that there'd be a, a, a certain kind of closure. And, and I, I'm also inclined to think that if we think of the current hub as a phase, not something permanent, that I'll, I'll rephrase all this. If we don't wear it out, it will be a much easier and fresher thing to reopen and revive at a subsequent date. So I, I, I think some plan for winding up this phase makes sense. But I also understand how important it is to have some alternatives developed as well. And so for me then, the critical question becomes how much time do we need in order to have some other space we can open in lieu of the Hunt Avenue Hub so that the impacted, the negatively impacted businesses on Main Street get some relief from the impacts of the hub and the loss of parking, so that the residents of Church and Edwards get some relief from the extra traffic. But, but, you know, making a transition in a way that keeps this kind of energy and vitality part of our response to the challenges that our businesses face in this really, really difficult time. Is it thirty days we need? Is it sixty days we need? Is it two weeks? I have no sense. I'm really entirely dependent on staff to give me some guidance as to what kind of transition is possible time-wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. And I will put it to staff in just a moment. I have a few comments I want to put out there before we talk about sort of transition, what it might look like. I think it's been a really wonderful heart of the town. And first, I do want to thank Vice Mayor Doring with the genesis of this idea coming forward. It created a heart center of our town in a very challenging time and this strange dynamic of trying to make something attractive, but not too attractive because we didn't want it overrun. But it really gave a center to the town. And I was there one of the evenings of the music and I have to say, it was a magic moment. Seeing the downtown lights, the hub lit up with music and it was not overcrowded. But there were some folks there enjoying it and it really had a magic quality to it. So I think we've got an opportunity with however we phase or transition to, to, to see this as an, an opportunity. One of the things that I want to think about is if we take the hub away completely, does that, do we go back to where we were and then have to, you know, what is the time before we come up with something else? Part of a way I'm thinking is by reducing the size of the hub to one side of the street or one of the parking areas, maybe a, a parklet on one side, do we keep the hub and that sort of heart activity? I was looking forward to the idea that when we get to better times, when there are more people walking around, that they can have a, a place in the center of town where they can sit and, and perhaps music can be played and these sorts of things can happen in the center of town. Is it worth looking at keeping a parklet along one of those sides of Hunt Street open, sort of a mini version of the hub? That could also potentially be opened for, or, you know, opened up for fully for a special event. Say, somebody wanted to have a special event on a, on a Friday or Thursday evening that we, we close the whole street on a, on a special event, but just kept the, the one side open as, you know, continuously to sort of keep that place marker. And this idea that it's gotten so much positive reaction that folks know at least some version of that is in that area, while at the same time, looking at possibilities for Moneyway and other areas. I would just hate to lose everything about this and then have to, you know, rebuild somewhere else without a, a plan and maybe not get something. So that's my thought is, is there some middle ground version here where we get the traffic back flowing? We find a way to get the orange cones, et cetera, out of there and have a, just a smaller version, but also that, that allows that sort of gathering space that brings that vitality and energy right to the, the heart of the town. Those are my thoughts. I'm seeing Mr. Doring with a hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I agree that we don't want to preclude the use of this space forever and don't want to give that signal to the community. I don't know about the logistics of half of, of Hunt. I still think you're going to have an issue with truck turning radius. I don't think they're going to be able to make that turn, but I'm not an expert in that area. I, I think there's going to be a problem there and you're going to have a continuation of of trucks going on to Pope and then to Edwards, just because it's a little easier, or Adams. And Adams causes all kinds of problems. I, I've been involved in the Adams Street, you know, seeing those trucks and being behind a truck. It's kind of a mess. But I, I agree that we're going to need to use Hunt in this space intermittently over the years. And in particular, really the whole idea in my mind, the genesis of the idea was a response to the Streetscape Improvement Project where our, our downtown streets was going to, were going to be torn up. And we needed to provide as many options as possible for our retail and restaurants to allow their patrons to still be served. So that was really the thought in my mind as to why this was a, a good spot to use and, and really a testing ground. And we very well need to use that if that Streetscape project ever gets off the ground. So, but I, I agree with the mayor that it would be, it would be a shame to just totally just write this off forever. I think we should keep it open as a, as an option. But I, I also agree with a council member, Hardy, that we need to have certainty in telling our folks, whether it's residents or business owners, when's the trigger date? And I think he's correct to look to staff to kind of work on that, that date and figure that out. Is it orange? Is it thirty days from now? What is the measurement that we can all say, yeah, that makes sense? We've helped our businesses as much as we can. Now they are able to do certain things. I think that that would be a good objective measure. a good objective measure for all of us to look at. And then explore in the longer term, of course, money way, because I do think that's a great opportunity for our community. But it's a much longer discussion and I agree. And I trust Councilmember Hardy with respect to the long-term planning that that's going to take a lot of work on our part and a fair amount of money. So.
Thank you. So with that, if, if, if at this point there are no council comments, if I could put it back to the staff to get a little bit of, of response to Mr. Hardy and Mr. Doring's thoughts there.
Sure. Really helpful feedback. I think in terms of how much time it would take us to bring you back some options that are, that are analyzed. We have talked about a concept of prohibiting right turns off of Hunt northbound, but allowing the right turn northbound into Hunt. So the trucks could turn. And the concept would be, could we place some parklets on either side? I think we need to analyze the turning radius of the larger trucks. When you're out in that space early in the morning and a large trucks coming through, sometimes they take more liberties with the other side of the road when there are no cars parked there. But if we had tables or a parklet there, we, we need to understand the, the turning radius and study that. And, and I think there are some other ideas that we have tossed about that we could present as options. The good news is there are, there is some innovation and entrepreneurs are wildly excited about the idea of a off-site constructed parklet. So those are really off the shelf these days. So one option for us is to look that's, look to some ideas that are already pre-built. Of course, there are a lot of other lower cost alternatives that we can bring forward and, and consider for either existing parking spaces or some of our red zones like the area opposite, opposite Hunt on Main Street. I, knowing that we're publishing next, our February 23rd agenda this coming Friday, I think it's fair to say our, our earliest opportunity to bring back some alternatives would be the meeting of March 9th. So I would look at that meeting as our early opportunity to present a few options. And then in terms of timing, we're in the purple phase now. I do think that it, it's probably foreseeable that in the coming couple of weeks, there's a, a good chance that we have an opportunity to transition from purple to red, which would restore indoor dining at 25% occupancy. That's the red tier. The orange tier may take several weeks later. That transition from red to orange would allow for 50% indoor dining. But the idea of allowing some indoor dining and perhaps warmer weather coming over the couple, the next couple of weeks, I think, I think it's foreseeable that within the next two to four weeks, we that Napa County has a good chance of transitioning from purple to red and allowing some indoor dining. I think that's a reasonable, I option to tie the, the, the winding down of this to the transition from purple to red or orange, if you prefer orange. And then in terms of timing, we're prepared to remove the materials as, as quickly as the council would ask us to. So we can, we can wind that down very quickly. It's a matter of coordinating the removal of some of the heavier items within the hub. And I think whether it's now or 30 days or less, we're happy to, to identify a time that works for the council. And in, in terms of money way, I think it's fair, I, I agree that money way presents some really interesting long-term opportunities. Our staff discovered some work that was done, I believe in the late 60s, early 70s. A state of California paid for commissioned report and study that presented some very interesting pedestrian focused amenities. And there was a comment about the, the Waste Authority's grant and we did receive some grant funds that allow us to pursue opportunities for consolidation of some of the trash and recycling bins on that corridor. So that's something that we have an opportunity to work on near term. Longer term, I think considering some use of, some undergrounding of utility wires above is, would be very interesting. That uses something called Rule 28 money. A lot of work goes into those, but it's something that, that we should consider longer term as a an additional opportunity that, that enhances the attractiveness of that corridor. So I'll, I'll stop there and and happy to talk about additional timing issues and our Public Works Director, City Engineer is available to also answer questions about parklets and turning radiuses and things like that.
Any thoughts here from council on timing as we look at this? Perhaps time. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Hardy.
Given that there's necessarily a, a bit of uncertainty about these transitions in terms of the COVID restrictions, I'm, I'm inclined to go with the earlier, earlier of the transition, you know, the, when we open up indoor dining in the red 25% status. Or, and pick a number, but I would say 30 days. I, I think you know, that, that's late enough that it gives us a real opportunity based on what we know today that will be in red before that happens. But if for some reason there's a setback in terms of the COVID numbers or just a change in the policy that the state mandates, we still have some certainty that we can offer those who, who are bearing the brunt of, of the negative impacts. That's, that's how I would approach the timing and and if we're able to get a, you know, staff report on, on some of our options moving forward at our first meeting in March, then, you know, we're we're in a position to maybe not have a complete transition plan when, when the hub closes, but already we, we will have laid a foundation for the next phase of our ongoing efforts to support and revitalize downtown. And I, I, I have to say it's really wonderful to see what we've been able to accomplish and, and what our, our staff has been able to do really with very limited resources at a time of great need. I'm, I'm my hat's off to everyone involved. It's, it's been fabulous. Thank you.
So your, your thoughts in terms of trigger points, so to speak, are moving to the red zone would, tier would be one and then 30 days would be the, if that didn't occur, 30 days. That's sort of what you're putting out there. How do folks feel about that? I'm seeing a nod from Eric.
Yeah, yeah, I, I like that a lot. I also think it fits in well with staff thought on sort of idea generation in the meantime. Even if if we do hit red in two weeks, let's say, and we decide to close the hub, we're still going to get together a week or two later, have this same conversation and talk about other options. So I like that sort of transition. If we don't move to red, we're just going to reconvene anyway and talk about other options at that time. So I like that whole, that whole transition plan. I think that works well. So I'm, I'm in favor. I like Lester's ideas. I would, I would vote in favor of let's close when we shift to red and otherwise let's plan on doing it when we regroup the first meeting next month.
Anna, was I seeing a nod from you on that?
Reasonable to me. Thank you.
Paul? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, I was thinking about a few more days than 30, like 45, but I can live with 30. I'm okay with that. But I, I want to make one comment about what Councilmember Hardy said, which I think is extremely important. He, he used the phrase, let's not wear it out. Don't wear it out. I think we underestimate how we can do that in this city. Because I, I really think, you know, we're at that point where we're starting to upset some people and I don't want to get there. I mean, we, I want to make it something that people have a fond memory of so we can go back to that well again. I think, I think we're going to need to use that space during the streetscape and, and we can use it during other special events. I do, I do, I know there's a question about staff time. My idea was that during the pandemic, I think there is actually, I don't think there's been extra staff time necessarily used or extra costs necessarily, necessarily used, but I don't know that. Maybe the manager could talk about that. Yeah, I'm okay with, you know, the, I'm okay with the 30 days and going into the red. Seems reasonable.
Yeah, I, I'd like the comment too about let's not, you know, wear it out. I like that a lot and we're heading into, hopefully we're going to have more beautiful weather like we did this weekend. If so, then Public Works is likely to be hustling a lot more, trying to run out and start cutting grass and trimming hedges. So anyway, I just want to keep, keep an eye on that. How, how long can we go and try to, try to take care of this as much as we can?
So, so just for clarification, if we're talking about when it moves into the red, I mean, is that the point that it moves that we've made that decision here tonight? So that when it moves into red, we're, we're not reconvening to make that decision. We've made that decision tonight. So that if it happens in two days or two weeks, when it moves into red, that comes down. Is that where we're at?
Well, I, I would reframe the question just a little bit, Mayor. I would make that a question for staff. Is the proposal on the floor, so to speak, adequate direction?
It is, and, and we may need a couple of days to plan this work to integrate the, the closure. What our objective would be is to pick a morning to begin and move it as quickly as possible. And so we're going to need a few days to schedule that and adjust with our Public Works crew, coordinate with Harold Smith and Sons to work with the very heavy weights that we have placed at the front of both entrances. And when I look at the calendar, I'm looking at March 11th as a potential implementation of the 30-day option. Where we would start on a Thursday morning and hope to finish by, you know, either that day or it would give us an extra day to, to finish before that particular weekend. And I, I'm going to look to the Public Works Director for a nod or a, that's a terrible idea. I think it's a nod that that would work for our staff. I think our, our vision is that it would probably take one day and maybe half of another before it's completely cleared up and we would want to clean the area as well. So and then in terms of a, a shorter time, if we transition to red next week, for example, we'll plan, we'll work with our operations staff to figure out the best days for that. It most likely will be a Monday through Friday. So whatever day we pick, it would be Monday through Friday and we'll, we'll probably be a day to a day and a half to finish that.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't say as much, but I've assumed all along that there's not likely to be a way that you completely synchronize taking down the hub with the, the date that everyone is officially allowed to operate under red. We don't necessarily get much notice at all of those kinds of changes, but if it's simply the trigger date for, okay, now we go to work and figure out how to do it, I, I, I think that direction serves its purpose.
Good. Well, very good. And, and just so staff knows and hopefully feels the appreciation from the community and the council, it was, it's just been remarkable. And in a remarkable time, finding a way to keep our community tied together in our socially distanced way, but it, it, it was a, a, a light to carry us through. So thank you. And Stephanie, a special thank you to you for your focus on it. Really remarkable. So it's appreciated.
Stephanie and staff, all Public Works.
Yes, we need to come up with a good name for money way now. Let's get the competition going.
It's, that's the perfect name already, Paul.
Well, coming from you, Eric, that makes
I was just going to say, you know, we might consider leaving the gratitude wall up or something like that on Hunt. Maybe there's a way we can refresh that concept, but you know, it's, it's well placed there. It'd be nice to keep that going somehow. I don't know how.
Yeah, that, looking at what can be sort of kept in that area, just to keep that sort of spirit going, I think it's certainly worth it.
Yeah.
And also, yes, thank you, Erica, on Public Works. For us on it.
I, I think that's a great idea, Eric, because that really then signifies that we're not closing it forever.
That, that's right. It, it could actually be a shift to thank staff basically and the community for getting us through this. So.
Okay, with that, it looks like, I believe we've given direction to staff. That's our last item. And so I'm gonna adjourn here in a moment, but just wanted to, again, just remind folks, let's, let's see each other through this. We're close. We're not all the way there yet. So let's keep our eyes out for those who need help and work together and we'll get through this. If there's anything else from the council before we adjourn, I'll look for a hand. Seeing none. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the continued focus and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Good night to all.
Thank you. Good meeting.